All right, it's six o'clock. All the media report. Sam, would you give the invitation?
Sure. Gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for this day and for the blessings of life, and we thank you for all the goodness you show us. And we just ask, Lord, as a council, that we would do what's right for the city, Howe and its citizens, help us that we may always look to you for the strength of guides and wickedness in Jesus' name you pray.
Okay. Thank you. We don't have any public requests, so we have to call. And City Administrator, you have the board.
Uh, got a, got the finalized deal back from GTUA that's there in front of you, Mark. Uh, we've been looking at, me and Tintwell, the city engineer and the talk with the United States, we've been looking at doing some sewer projects in the town. We've got the one line we need to relay out here by the apartments that needed, get this out a second, needs to add another manhole. Got another line we may need to run to help alleviate some pressure problems on one manhole over here on Diddy Street. And we've got a pretty bad infiltration in the south part of town. We're looking at redoing some manholes, try to stop, stop the re, I'll be honest with you, I'm not sure if you regrout them, reseam them or how you do it, re-sit them either. But what I thought we'd do is, try to, by next meeting, try to have some figures on some jobs, let y'all look at them. And then maybe we can do some of that and take some of this, maybe look to paint off some bonds that we have with GTUA, paint them off. That's the only thing we do with May, work on sewer, on pay bonds, office leftovers. Uh, the Dix, this is the Dix River project that we have behind the ball field. And, uh, Houseville 1445, that's gonna be in agreement with Grayson County. Uh, we're gonna have to come in and either Grayson County or us will have to take over the ETJ on building regulations roads. Uh, right now, we're looking at, it was due by April 1st, and there was a question that went before the Attorney General, so that's kinda got put on the back burner. I took it from Jeff Harrell, the county, uh, until probably July or so. We're working, I'm working with Johnny right now, we're trying to, I've got, I've got through subdivision ordinances, but I'm preparing to, and we pretty much decided what we'd like to do, Johnny would like to stay more or less over charge of it since he's gonna take care of the roads and stuff, but he also agreed to take the stricter of the two ordinances, which is gonna be ours, on, uh, plating and the roads and the utilities. And it's gonna be, it's gonna be kinda the same here, it's, we're gonna try to say we're still doing it the same way, we're gonna work together and make it good.
Okay, I want the council to know that you and your crew did a great job a week ago Sunday. When you turned the water off, they know the perfect time to turn off water, but, uh, everyone should've been in Sunday school and church, and it was all twenty minutes.
Yeah, that, that job went real good. I mean, everything we did just fell into place, so it was, it was nice.
They had all the pipe and everything cut and laid out, one guy in the hole or two, but they went to work and it was twenty minutes.
We did a good job. Really good.
Well, we appreciate you.
I'll, I'll let the, I'll let the government know.
On your business, we have any discussions on the financial statement, the minutes, this report, Police Department, or City Administrator, have you got something?
This is the first time, there, uh, there's a few bugs in this we're trying to work out, this is, we're gonna try to make it a little bit more streamlined than this. This is just what we came up with this time, but we're, we're working on this part of it right now.
Okay, is that all? Okay. I need a motion and a second on the reports.
I make the motion.
Sam, second. Diane. All in favor? Five. Okay, consider resolution number 02-002. Bobby's Little Field and Text Dot, your own.
All right. Um, I've got a, some displays here, and, uh, try to set these up where everybody can see them.
Okay, this is to make the frontage roads one-way.
Just to 902.
To 902.
Whatever I want.
That's right. Um, I think you've got some information that I've taken there that tells about this, but, uh, if, uh, if you're familiar with a US 75, from Center Street and Sherman, all the way to the river, frontage roads are one-way. From Center Street south, they're two-way. And, uh, everybody understands what I'm talking about when I say that. Um, we were approached, I say we, Text Dot has approached, uh, several years ago by, first of all, TI, and they had some concerns from their employees about the safety of the egress and egressing around their industry, their plant. And, uh, so we started, they hired a consultant to do some studies on what to do to improve the situation. Um, looked at several deficiencies in our system, one being the, uh, the capacity of FM 1470 overpass in Sherman, uh, another, the mobility, uh, i.e. the, uh, two-way traffic movement, created lack of foot movement and some intersections, things of that nature. Um, after that, uh, we did our, our NPO, which is housed at Teacog, did a traffic analysis and gave us some traffic numbers. And after that, the Sherman Economic Development Corporation hired a consultant, a spirit of civil, out of Dallas, to do a detailed, uh, engineering study. And that's what I'm gonna show you today, the results of their study. What we've got is a project that we've got funding for, and we're scheduled to go to bid letting in September of '03. And it's basically two phases. What we want to, uh, what we want to do is, in phase one, which, like I said, we'll take bids in September, is to, we're gonna re, or build a new interchange at Shepherd Drive. And we're gonna have the main lanes of US 75 going up and over what will be a connection of She, of Shepherd Drive. Right now, Shepherd terminates or is now in continuous across 75. It connects to the frontage road and lead aside. So the new plan, we would make that connection, we build an overpass or, uh, take 75 up and over, and we would construct three new access ramps. This one right here in the southwest quadrant already exists, so we would continue to use that, but there'd be, there'd be one of them right here, here and here. Everybody see that?
Where, where is MEMC? It's right here by Shepherd Drive.
Yes, MEMC is right here, uh, they have a couple of driveways, TI is further, in front of nowhere. This would be built simultaneously with the FM, I'll just set this one down here, the FM 1417 overpass. And, uh, if you are familiar with that area, we have quite a bit of congestion during shift changes at some of these local industries, Johnson &amp; Johnson and, uh, Procter &amp; Gamble and what have you. So we're gonna rebuild that to a five-lane bridge, we'll have signalized intersections, traffic signals at both of these intersections. Um, the middle lane of that five-lane will be a left turn protected lane. Uh, also, simultaneously, we'll be rebuilding, are building a new bridge along the west frontage road over the BNSF railroad. And that will make this what we call the west frontage road or the southbound frontage road continuous. So that, uh, in the end, when we convert to a one-way movement on the frontage roads, we'll have very convenient crossover points, and that's what you have to have with a one-way system. Uh, you can't expect people to drive a long way out of the way to get from one side to the other. We try to keep those no more than about a mile and a half apart, and I think we've been able to achieve that with this plan. So, um, just to recap, we will, we'll build 1417 overpass, we'll build the, uh, bridge across Burlington Northern Santa Fe Railroad, and then the interchange at Shepherd Drive, and that'll give us, uh, one, two, we'll still maintain the crossovers underneath the bridges at the railroad, three, three, uh, interchanges between, actually four if you count Park Street, between Center Street and FM 902. Okay? Uh, phase two, which, uh, I'll just go ahead and show you for your, your information only, uh, really is, is not scheduled yet, is what it'll do, is it'll add some additional improvements, more ramp work, we're gonna have to rebuild the bridges here at the railroad on the east side, that bridge, and then the Talkabout Creek Bridge, and we can do some realignment work there. Uh, the biggest part of it's up in Sherman, the realignment of, uh, the South Travis Street interchange. I'm showing you the whole picture, the majority of this is in the city of Sherman. And this is just, uh, kind of a summary of the costs involved. Uh, 1417 overpass would cost about 2.45 million, Shepherd Drive, 7.9, um, the bridge at the railroad, 1.6. We've got, uh, just to make the total conversion was, was strapping, signing and resurfacing about 800,000. Total construction cost is, uh, 12.7 million dollars, and that, that money's already appropriated. We're also gonna spend some money to buy some additional roadway around the Shepherd Drive area. We led the project in September, uh, we'll start construction somewhere around the 1st of November, and then we'll finish, uh, approximately May of 2004. And then at the end, the, the last thing we'll do is convert this to, uh, to one-way. Um, the city, well, we back up, the, uh, consultant finished their study, we held a public meeting in Sherman at the Chamber of Commerce on January 23rd, I believe, 2001. Uh, so we basically took comments at that time from interested parties in the public. We addressed a lot of the concerns, and, uh, so what I, what I'm coming to you tonight is to, uh, ask that you pass a resolution to support for the one-way system. The city of Sherman has already done that. Like I say, the majority of this, uh, this change is, is within their city limits, but there is a little small piece within the city of Howe. Uh, the other thing I want you to be, to recognize is, is that, um, this is just gonna be a fact of life, that, uh, I think eventually we're gonna have to convert all the way through the county. And Nocola County is already doing a study from McKinney, uh, north to our county line, and, and they're looking at, at converting to a one-way system. So, as this area becomes increasingly urbanized, uh, for safety reasons, for mobility reasons, uh, these one-way systems are, uh, preferred and needed.
The, uh, the access, the entrances and exits, all those are gonna be in Sherman or north of Howe that you're adding. Uh, so, if you, if you do the, uh, the one-way here in this city, obviously the people in the trailer park, they gotta go around, right? They're gonna come down.
I think this is just a 902, right? It's just a 902.
Right, just from the Howe to north. Actually, your city limit falls, I'm not sure exactly where it falls.
It's 902.
902, right, just a.
It's serving.
No, no, no. South of 902 will be two-way, just like it is today, no change here. Uh, really, uh, there are just a few, few places that would even impact significantly. And, uh, but what I'm telling you is, I, I think, even though we're not gonna act on, or we don't have any immediate plans to do anything south of 902, I really think you need to start thinking about that, because it's coming.
Do we have a chance?
Uh, well, it, yeah, you do, you do. Uh, and it's, it's up for public debate when that time comes, but, uh.
But the big dog with the big stick sometimes gets his way.
Yeah, but I, I know this, this is, is a design concept, uh, I mean, you, you really can't go into any urbanized area if you don't have one-way frontage road. I mean, it's just a fact of life, it's just, it's just too, too dangerous to allow two-way frontage roads when you have really high traffic volumes and a lot of the interests in there are access points, driveways and what have you. And you see that starting to develop, maybe not so much right now, but I, I think you can predict it.
And this has nothing to do with, uh, the, uh, resurfacing of 902 south?
No, no, this is a completely separate project. Uh, the project you're referring to is, uh, it's getting ready to start in, in just a few weeks, and it'll go up to 902, but it's mainly just on the whole color main lanes, just freeway sections, doesn't it, rest of the frontage roads, uh, just, just freeway lanes and the ramps.
And this is permanent?
Yes.
And it's gonna take place if this council goes, yes or no, right?
Well.
You'd like our blessing.
We like your blessing because, uh, you know, there is some enforcement issues there, um, and if, if there were some control reservations, you know, we could step back and, and discuss it, surely, but, uh.
See, you've eliminated some of it by the Shepherd Drive overpass thing.
Right.
The entrances and exits.
We, we really haven't eliminated any ramps. We've added ramps at Shepherd. The only major change on a ramp is the, uh, the ramp right here, which is, uh, on the north end of TI, currently is an exit ramp. When we rebuild it, we'll rebuild it as an entrance ramp, and an entrance ramp going to be, going onto the highway. Okay? And the exit ramp that the employees at TI will use coming, uh, southbound will be down here, close to the old Osterre Meyer plant. We'll, uh, we'll make a temporary modification to that.
So, so you are going to, because right now, there's no connection between TI and, on the access road, the access road just goes underneath the.
Right, yes.
So that's gonna go through?
That's correct.
That's no small undertaking.
Well, it's, uh, you know, I think you saw it, I think we had an estimate of, of 1.6 million dollars, so it's a, you know, significant investment. Uh, it's gonna be a bridge with some embankment, um, but, but that is a problem in and of itself, just this weaving maneuver that the traffic has to make to get out of, uh, you know, TI. But we feel like that this would improve that quite a bit.
So when, when, when TIers get out, I mean, after that step, they're gonna have to exit south, they're gonna have to go south to the Shepherd Drive.
That's correct.
And then, for the northbound anyway.
For northbound, yes, they would have to, there'll be a, a loop, turnaround lane, they won't even have to go through the intersection, just loop back around, and they'll get right back on this ramp.
Let's see, you seem to be doing that, because that's a, that's a significant, uh.
Right.
Within, within the house city limits, what you're gonna have is, you're gonna have the 902, I mean, that's, that's our Highway 5, right? Right? I mean, that's right there on Highway 5, isn't it?
Yes. You know, if, if we'll, we'll have this sign that's, that's stay Highway 5, it already is, I believe. Continue to, for southbound exit, exit traffic, if we say, stay Highway 5 FM 902, there we go up. But 902 would still be two-way crossing.
Right.
It's just if you were over here on the west side, you couldn't go north, you'd have to go to the east side. People coming out of the school, um, really, there would be no change if you're coming out. If you're coming to the school, you couldn't come to the school on the east side, you'd have to come to the school on the west side.
But you have Shepherd Drive to cross over the ghetto.
That's correct.
And that's the first road up there that comes back to Dixon, dude.
Right.
What, what goes around, comes around, you talking about that, uh, exit ramp off 75 to TI? There used to be one there about a hundred years ago.
Is there?
They tore it up.
We're, we're not all that old yet.
Long time ago, there was a, there was a ramp there. The only problem I see is making it one-way through Howe, it'd make it tough on Joe King to get home, other than that, it wouldn't hurt anybody.
So this resolution you're talking about here is just, is from north of 902?
Between 902 and the city, right, just that little piece, like I said, that falls within the city of Howe. And, but Sherman's already endorsed it, had a public meeting, we've resolved those issues. And there were issues that, the main issues were down here in Sherman, uh, you know where the Holiday Inn is? Up north, there's different businesses over there, and the way we resolved that, uh, well, we, we, it was just too expensive to do what needed to be done, so we pulled that completely out of this project. So, so there'll be a short section here that's gonna be two-way. We'll leave it two-way, and then, uh, in phase two, when we come in, we'll rebuild this whole intersection, and make it all one-way at that time. And so they, they've all, I talked to all these businesses, I, I, you know, I'm not saying they're, they're gonna have to support, but they're all agreed with you.
Well, I see it as a safety improvement up at the intersection of 902, five, because if you don't have that traffic like this, it'll go both directions. They go south from there, but, uh, you don't have people coming from the north through that intersection.
Right, and, and that's what it does, it eliminates additional movement, traffic, conflicting movement of traffic.
Right, we've had fatalities up there on that, that the southbound traffic.
Where the entrance ramp is, it's been a problem, and then you, it would, it would reduce a lot of congestion there at the intersection by the school, I would think.
Yeah, I think so.
Are you doing any, are you gonna do anything? I'm, I'm trying to see, I'm, I don't know, maybe your glasses are in it.
I apologize for the being small, it's just hard to get it all.
Are you showing where our school is now, our high school?
Not really, your school is back sort of off the sheet, but it's, it's right over here.
Where, where's north? I guess, north is going, I mean, that's what's gotten me most of it, I'm gonna, north.
You're on the wrong side.
You wanna turn this way?
Now, yeah, that.
North is up.
Yeah, there you go.
And so.
School's right here.
Okay, and you are going, you have to build something, is that what you're saying?
No, no, we're not building.
Oh, you're doing, you're doing nothing there?
Now, eventually, this 902 bridge is only two-lane, as you know.
Right.
Uh, I know that at some point, we're gonna have to widen it, rebuild that bridge and widen it, but it's not part of this project.
Okay. Do you have no way to have an automatic turn?
No, you have to go through this intersection when we, you know, hopefully, whenever we rebuild this.
Okay.
We would rebuild it to multiple lanes, possibly a U-turn situation, you know, we might even take out some of this, some of this curvature over here.
And you've got a big mess, I know why you picked, I know why you picked 902, because you've got a big mess just immediately south of 902, try to straighten that all out.
Right, and it, you know, this was just a convenient, this is an interchange, so it just happens to be a convenient place to, uh, to stop it. But I think eventually, as, you know, Howe grows, manhole thing grows, and people keep coming in like projected, I, I think you need to start thinking about those situations. I, I know it, people, a lot of people will complain about it because they had to change their traffic patterns, but, uh, you know, it's, it's hard to argue, you know, safety, and that's what you're, you're gonna take.
Any signs you put up in the city limits? Text dot pays for them in the city?
Right, text, text dot? No, we'll put, we'll maintain them.
You will, okay.
We'll maintain everything on this system.
Any more discussion? I'm going to move on to resolution 02-002.
A second.
Everyone in favor? Thank you, Bobby.
All right, my pleasure.
an ordinance regarding regulations on public and semi-public swimming pools and spas. Okay, this is just for us to change our ordinance.
We, we have, I had, uh, from what John Butler, the county senatorian tells me, the state has one in place, the county has one in place, for a lot of the small towns, they never got adopted, so he's presented this to us, so it's enforced by the county senatorian.
Okay. The next ordinance is 543, uh, ordinance amending the code for the, uh, ordinance of the city of Howe, ordinance number 513, regarding the regulations of food establishments, clean food service establishments, retail stores, mobile food units, and roadside food vendors. You have the.
And I, as I understand, this is, this is basically mandated by the.
Okay, the city of Denison turned it down. Uh, I talked to one person today, uh, he says when the health department or anything goes up on him, he goes up on his customer, so.
What is this? This is, this is a, these were, these were fees, permanent fees?
Permanent fees for the businesses.
That the county, uh?
The county assesses.
County Health Department is asking for an increase.
Grayson County approved it, is that correct?
Grayson County Commissioners approved it, but not for cities outside of city limits.
What are they now?
Hmm?
What are they now?
Uh, they're, I think they're a hundred, hundred dollars, like the zero to five employees. In the Sherman paper this morning was an article about Denison's council meeting, and they denied the request. I don't know what other people.
Is this on top of the health department fees, or are these fees, they go straight to the health department?
Goes to the health department, please.
There's no question.
No, there's not. I don't like to go back to the city.
Okay, so, so we don't approve it, what does that, how does that affect us? Does it?
It would cost us as much to eat as us. If their permit goes, if their permit fees go up, of course, they're gonna have to raise their prices. They're just trying to get more money. And they have, there's.
And they have, there's, if I'm not mistaken, there's some people that's been laid off in the health department.
Well, that's not good.
But the businesses are like that.
If I'm not mistaken, I think partly, I think some of their funding from the county.
They have, yes, they...
The reason they're doing it.
They are having a tight...
Some of the state grants, yeah, that's why they're trying to work.
Okay, are we through discussing? Okay, we're in the public hearing. All right, now we vote on ordinance 542, on swimming pools and spas.
I'll make a motion, we accept it. The best.
Second. All in favor? Okay, ordinance 543. The Health Department increase.
Motion to accept?
You second?
We never say that. We, we need to honor our rights.
You second? I need a second. We have a motion to accept it or approve it.
Well, I'll make that second so I can put it against it.
You don't have to say.
Well, I was gonna let it die, but then I thought, well, shoot, I don't want your feelings to be hurt. All in favor?
All in favor? All opposed?
You're ready, but you can't do it.
All right.
That's not a quote, is it?
That's a good one, man. Now we go into executive session. I need a motion.
I'll make it.
Second.
Everyone in favor?